Good evening. I call the meeting to order of the February 9th regular city council meeting at 6:23 and a half.[21.39][21.39](laughter) Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
All right, now it's time for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Brenner will provide the invocation and Councilmember Duffield will lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. I pray in my tradition but ask that each of you join me in whatever way you talk to our higher power. I say, Heavenly Father, please guide us this evening to be fair and just and wise in representing our citizens. Help us to put aside our own motivations and our differences in order to do the right thing for our city as a whole. Remind us in all our actions to follow the golden rule, which is a tradition in most of the world's religions, and to remember to treat others as we would like to be treated. And we pray in the name of Jesus who called upon each of us to love one another. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to this great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, do we have the usual notice?
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Councilmember Brenner, do you have any announcements or reports?
I just wanted to mention that the Hoag Hospital received an award. We have a slide about that. I'd like to congratulate Hoag Hospital for winning a prestigious award for the third year in a row. They were named one of the 50 best hospitals in America in the HealthBrades 2021 Awards. The award means that Hoag is the top 1% of all hospitals in the nation for providing the highest care possible. Hoag also earned excellence awards for clinical care, pulmonary care, and stroke care. It confirms what we always say about Hoag Hospital and its staff, that they are the best of the best. We are so fortunate to have a hospital of this caliber in our community. So congratulations to Hoag Hospital and all the doctors, nurses, administrators, and staff who so very much deserve this award.
Councilmember O'Neil.
We had a Housing Element Subcommittee meeting last week. We will have another one on, excuse me, on February 17th at 6:00 p.m. I attended Orange County Business Council's Dinner on behalf of the TCA Board. We have the Finance Committee coming up on February 18th, starting at 3:00. And then it'll be virtual, but I'm pretty excited still that the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation has their first witty lecture coming up. And yeah, I'm just glad they were able to make that one work this year. And then on the screen, we have an announcement for, it will be tomorrow night, we have the Circulation Element Visioning Workshop. We invite our entire community to join us. Hopefully, folks who are, especially folks who are watching our study session, talking about the general plan update on the land use element, will need to be working through the circulation element as well. And we invite as much public participation as we can get tomorrow night, February 10th, 2021, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. To learn more and register for the workshops, please visit www.nuitporttogether.com.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, I announced that I had been elected to represent the city on the Regional Council of the Southern California Association of Governments, otherwise known as SCAG. And so my life begins to change because they meet all the time. They're meetings constantly. Thankfully, they're Zoom meetings because the physical meetings are downtown Los Angeles. So actually, it's a good thing. I'm not complaining. But it is because we're going through, as we just discussed in our study session, the Housing Element discussions. This is a very major part of where this, where the Rena numbers come from. They came from SCAG. So our representation on the Regional Council is going to be certainly informative and useful. So there was a Regional Council meeting last Thursday, followed by, well, actually, no, the Community Economic and Human Development Committee, which relates to housing, and I am on that subcommittee, if you will. And then there's the Regional Council. It was followed by the Regional Council. So I'll continue to report on SCAG activities. This is really more of an active role that we're playing because, the city is playing because of the importance of, obviously, these issues related to housing. One other quasi-announcement is City Manager Ling is going to do an update on homelessness, I believe, at our next meeting, February 23rd. And so that would be good. So I just wanted to give it a heads-up that there will be an important update on homelessness because we all know that there's a lot more homeless in our community and people are concerned. So we'll all look forward to that announcement. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Blom.
Thank you. I don't have too much to add, but kind of piggybacking off of what Diane had just said and what we had talked with Grace about, I spent the last few days going around the community, going to all of our homeless hotspots and talking with the people that were there and to kind of understand what our outreach looks like and the difficulties that, you know, face what we've been dealing with there. And it was a really eye-opening experience. Most people didn't want to discuss anything. Most people don't want to talk. It's a very combative situation. And so, you know, I think we see the letters that come through and we understand the frustration of the city. We really do. We're right there with you. We live in the same spaces. And we want to help solve this problem. And sometimes we feel that the burden comes down really hard on our city staff or on the police department or, you know, our outreach programs. But I think we have a lot to discuss here, and I'm looking forward to the discussion next time that Grace brings forward. But it was really an eye-opening experience to see that a lot of people don't want to leave. And it becomes difficult for what we have to deal with with the city. And I'm just really appreciative for the people that are on the ground, constantly working with these people. And we are seeing movement. I realize it's not as fast as some of us want, but it's great to see that we are outreach-ing really, really well. And so I just want to touch base on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I promised I would not talk about this, but I can't help it. This date, last year, was my 40th and our 40th anniversary. And so this date tonight is my 41st. Last year was a lot more expensive than this year.[484.84][484.84](laughter) So I'm saving a lot of money coming here to this meeting instead of going to my typical anniversary dinner. But I do want to thank my beautiful wife for putting up with me and letting me do this. I don't know why she allows this, but she's been very supportive over the years and has grown to help me get through all of this. So I wish her and I a wonderful anniversary, and I love you, Terry. Sorry I brought it up.[518.01][518.01](laughter) But the city comes first.[521.25][521.25](laughter)
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to announce the city will be awarding additional grants to local Newport Beach businesses that have been impacted by COVID-19. The Small Business Support Grant Program will provide grants to $5,000 each to qualifying small businesses. Applications will be accepted between Wednesday, February 10th, tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., and Wednesday, February 17th at 5:00 p.m. Businesses must be based in Newport Beach and be able to demonstrate the need for financial support due to the impacts of COVID-19. For more information and to apply, please go to newportbeachca.gov/supportgrants, S-U-P-P-O-R-T grants. Thank you.
Thank you. And last few days ago, or was it last week? I can't remember now. But I had the distinct pleasure of interviewing Dr. Martin Fee from Hoag Hospital, who was absolutely fantastic on the subject of COVID and immunology and the virus and the efforts to get past it and his, also some, his thoughts about the future. And so the interviewer was yours truly, but the star of the show was Dr. Fee, of course. And he appropriately got the lion's share by a lot and really gave a really intense overview, not only of where we are, but where, what it was like to be on the front lines at Hoag when the pandemic is coming right at you. And obviously, a tremendous, tremendous effort from the Hoag staff, all the doctors, everybody. But I think if everybody just thinks for a moment what that would have been like, to work in that environment, especially before the vaccines came out and people going home to their families and not knowing what they might be bringing with them despite the PPE and all the rest of it. So just a lot of stresses. And, but he had some very interesting thoughts on this whole thing we've all been going through for this past year. And so it's on newportbeachca.gov, MBTV and YouTube, NewportBeachGov. So if you have an interest, and I think we all do, and he gives a unique local perspective from, you know, our absolutely great partner, Hoag Hospital. And next, so last year, the State of Address was a wonderful event with 425 people sold out. And the mayor was absolutely incredible in his delivery. His family was right up front, and there were just accolades, and he gave an address that was, I thought, fantastic. And I was just thinking, oh, how am I going to get past this and do it for, if I become mayor, the following year? So thankfully, (laughter) I don't have to be in a room of 425 people and deliver such a soliloquy. So thanks to Ed Selich, our former three-time mayor, and our Speak Up Newport group. We're going to have just a little back-and-forth time tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. And I'm going to give the state of the city in a more relaxed atmosphere. And Ed has put together some questions, which he says there's some surprise questions for me. I don't know what that means, but I'm sort of looking forward to it. And, but I will go over some facts and give a state of the city in terms of our finances and what we've got to look forward to as well, and looking back the year we've had. And I'm just thankful that, you know, well, we don't know what happens with the future, but Mr. O'Neil did such a great job with getting us through it and leading. And so we'll speak to all those things and kind of wrap it up with a look forward and, which will be informed a little bit by Dr. Fee's talk, actually. I think, I think business is going to be booming here fairly soon, so I'm excited about that. So that's tomorrow at 4:00 p.m., and you register at www.speakupnewport.com. And then finally, much to the city staff's delight, there's a three-day weekend coming up. And who doesn't like that? And so, just so residents realize that City Hall will be closed in observance of President's Day Holiday, which is a national holiday, of course, Monday, February 15th, 2021. So don't come down here with your roll of plans in the rain. The City Hall will be closed. Thank you. And next, we have the consideration of matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. This is not a matter of discussion because we are just polling the council to see if there are three council members who would like to discuss the matter at a future date. So Councilmember Dixon has asked for the City Council to consider a resolution expressing support for actions to further strengthen local authority and control. And I have a feeling we'll have more than three council members who support bringing this item back.
That would be unanimous.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 12. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay. So items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items 1 through 12. Councilmember Brenner.
I just have one correction on the minutes that I need to make sure gets in the record. At the last meeting, I mentioned SPON, and I identified it as still protecting our Newport, no, as stop polluting our Newport, which is sometimes referred to today as still protecting our Newport. But in the transcription, it came out as still polluting our Newport.[992.75][992.75](laughter) So we need to make sure that that is corrected in the minutes.[998.12][998.12](laughter)
Good idea. Councilmember O'Neil.
I noted recusal on item number three and a logic no vote on item number five.
Councilmember Dixon.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Blom.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Duffield.
Mayor Protam.
And thank you. I have none.
And I have none as well.
For this time, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
I move the balance of consent calendar, items 1 through 12, with a clarification on item 1 from Councilwoman Brenner, and no vote on item number 5 by Councilman O'Neil, and recusal on item number 3 by Councilman O'Neil.
Okay. Are there any phone calls? All right. Any additional council comments? And any other comments from the community room? Don't see any. Okay. We have a second?
One second.
All right. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for item 3. Ordinance number 2021-1, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving Plan Community Development Plan Amendment Number PD 2020-001 for the residences at 4400 Von Karman Project located at 4400 Von Karman Avenue. Ordinance number 2021-2, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving development agreement DA 2020-002 for the residences at 4400 Von Karman Project located at 4400 Von Karman Avenue. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments on non-agenda items. So do we have any comments from the community room?
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I have a comment that I hope will reinforce a non-agenda comment I made some months ago about alternative voting systems that you, as a council, have the power to adopt. As you know, the county is in the midst of an election to fill a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors. Although that is a nonpartisan office, the candidates have made clear their affiliations with the national political parties, three identifying with one party and two, one of them much more prominent, the other identifying with the other party. Because this is a winner-take-all election with no runoff, the party with the three candidates faces a dilemma in that they're concerned that even though they believe that a majority of the district would like to elect a supervisor from their party, they fear the votes, those votes, will be split among the three candidates, causing the prominent one from the other party to win, even though in a runoff, they believe she might have lost. What does this have to do with Newport Beach? One can easily imagine a council race in which we have, say, two pro-development candidates running against one anti-development candidate. And because Newport Beach also holds runner-take-all, winner-take-all elections with no runoff, the anti-development candidate could win even though a majority wanted to elect a pro-development council member. What are the solutions to this? One obvious solution is to hold runoff elections, which is something you could do, when one candidate receives, when the winning candidate receives less than the majority. Another thing that can be done is to institute a system called ranked choice voting, in which the voters indicate not just their first choice for the council, but who they would want to vote for a second, third, and so on, if their preferred candidate did not win. This allows the election official to determine the result that would have occurred if there had been a runoff without physically having to hold a runoff. Again, our city charter places this within your power. It requires only two steps. Our Orange County Registrar currently has software that can support ranked choice voting, also called instant runoff voting. You have to first encourage our registrar in Orange County to get that voting system certified by the state of California. And second, you need to enact an ordinance declaring that to be the voting system for council races in Newport Beach. I do hope you will give this serious consideration so that the people on one side and the other of an issue in Newport Beach won't face the same dilemma that the parties are in Orange County today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the community room? Okay. Seeing none. Do we have any phones? One phone call. Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead.
You are still a young and very, and underserved woman.[1342.65][1342.65](laughter)
Please mute your device.
Active woman.[1345.65][1345.65](laughter)
Okay. Thank you for your done. No other calls? All right. The first public hearing item is the amendment to the Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan to Include Babola Village Parking Management Overlay District. Do we have a brief staff report?
Certainly. We can do, definitely do brief. I'm going to have Jim Campbell just go ahead and run through just a really short PowerPoint. But this is an amendment to our local coastal program, and it really focuses on waiving of parking for specific uses, specifically kind of the retail and office uses in the Babola Village area. I'm going to go ahead, Deputy Director Jim Campbell, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Simone. Mayor, Council, Jim Campbell, Deputy Director, Community Development Department. So this is an amendment to our local coastal program to add a parking management overlay district to the Babola Village area. This project has actually been in review for quite a number of years. The city actually adopted this amendment. You know, the purpose of this was to protect the character of Babola Village and to meet the parking demands of visitors. The area in question is from Adams to A Street, and, you know, obviously, all the parking in between and all the land uses there. The city actually adopted the parking management overlay into the zoning code back in 2015. It was included in the implementation plan, but it was removed by the Coastal Commission when they certified our LCP in 2017. And so what this is, is just to put it back in there. And so that was what this application was. We authorized it in 2019. Coastal Commission approved it, but they had suggested modifications. And what that means is that it comes back to the City Council for inclusion of those changes that the Coastal Commission placed in our ordinance. And that's the action asked of you tonight. So what this does is it creates parking management district regulations within the LCP, which is sort of like that base procedural requirement, but it also establishes the district for Babola Village itself. And the real big change here is that it will require a coastal development permit to implement this. And as Simone indicated, what it really does is it eliminates parking requirements for most uses, and it relies upon kind of a shared parking pool within the entire district. So it eliminates the parking constraint for uses within the district to, say, go from a retail establishment to a restaurant or vice versa. And so it does simplify things for the businesses. This is really an economic development initiative that we've been working on for quite a number of years. It does require we retain existing parking, and it allows us to permit shared use of existing parking facilities more readily than otherwise in other areas of town. It does suspend in-loop parking fees. That fee is way too low for us to do much with, so it does that. We've already got that in our policy, so that's not new here for the council really tonight. It also requires we maintain our existing voluntary parking program. It requires a wave-finding sign program. But guess what? We've already actually implemented that, so that's actually good news. Accommodation encouragement of alternative transportation. And so those are, all those types of things that are already in our policy document. So the real big change here for us today is that this ordinance does place the parking management district into the LCP. We have to implement that through a coastal development permit, and so we will be pursuing that. Now, the area is actually split jurisdiction between the city and the coastal commission. Everything that is oceanward of the boardwalk is in the coastal commission's jurisdiction, and that's where our biggest parking resource is. And so what we'll be doing is creating a CDP for the entire district. The city will review it at the planning commission level, and then we'll send it to the coastal commission for their review. And once that is adopted, then we'll be able to implement the district, and hopefully we'll have this completed, say, within the next, within about a year, hopefully faster. But it will definitely reduce the parking restrictions for the village. So tonight, we ask that you conduct a public hearing, introduce the ordinance, and pass it on to second reading at the next meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Not a moment too soon on this. Ms. Dixon.
Well, thank you, staff. And while your notes said, we passed this, in fact, when we first, many of us first joined the council and took our first meeting in January 2015, this was on the agenda. And, but it was passed by the prior council in 2014. So this is probably a good example of not our government, but our other government agencies moved quite slowly. So we, as a council, as Jim just said, we approved this and then had to go to coastal. They wanted to put their light touch on it, and now we're looking at it again, and then they'll go back to coastal. This is where your taxpayer dollars are at work. But I do want to say, all kidding aside, that this is a game changer for Babola Village. It is something that was long recognized as a no-cost economic development boost to the restaurants and retail businesses that are now encouraged to look at doing business in Babola Village, and they will not be required to deliver 10 parking spaces or whatever their square footage would require that are just not, simply not available. And so this is a game changer, and I look forward to seeing how it does have a ripple effect in encouraging business to, businesses to come back to Babola Village. Many of them left and came up here to the new Main Street years and years ago in the '60s, and hopefully, many of them, the small businesses and restaurants, will enjoy what the city and the state has now made possible. So thank you, staff, for shepherding this for the longest period of time. I'm glad to see it finally come to reality, and let's get it going. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other council members wishing to speak at this time, we'll open it up to the public hearing. And do we have anyone else to speak on this? Seeing no one. Project?
I'd like to make the motion if it's coming back here.
I think, any public comments from the community room? None? No phone calls? All right. No additional council comments or questions?
effect in encouraging business to, businesses to come back to Baboa Village. Many of them left and came up here to the new Main Street years and years ago in the '60s, and hopefully many of them, the small businesses and restaurants, will enjoy what the city and the state has now made possible. So thank you, staff, for shepherding this for the longest period of time. I'm glad to see it finally come to reality, and let's get it going. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other council members wishing to speak at this time, we'll open it up to the public hearing. And do we have anyone else to speak on this? Seeing no one. Project?
I'd like to make the motion, if it's coming back here.
I think, any public comments from the community room? None? No phone calls? All right. No additional council comments or questions, so we got a motion?
I'll make the motion, if I may please, to adopt ordinance number 2021-4 to amend the local coastal program implementation plan to include Baboa Village Parking Management Overlay District and Plan.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay. Mr. Blom, seconds. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for 2021-4. An ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach adopting local coastal program amendment LC 2017-001 is modified by the California Coastal Commission to Title 21 Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to the Parking Management Overlay District and Plan. Oh, sorry about that. There we go. Mayor? Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. The next item on my calendar is to receive and file item to continue the discussion relative to short-term lodging on Newport Island.
We continue?
We have a motion to continue?
I'll move.
Okay. Has everyone got that? Ms. Dixon, you seconded?
Yes.
All right. Any comments? Anybody on this? Okay. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Moving on to current business, the next item is the presentation of recommendations for the sculpture exhibition at Civic Center Park.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tim Hetherington from the library, and I'm also the staff person for the City Arts Commission. Back in January, the Arts Commission at their meeting approved 10 selections and three alternates for phase number six of the sculpture exhibition in Civic Center Park. Tonight, we have Rick Stein, who's the CEO of Arts OC and the project manager for the sculpture exhibition, and he will present the selections and their locations and the three alternates. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rick.
Thank you, Tim. And good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be before you again with the latest phase of the sculpture exhibition recommendations. And just a refresher, so I'm Rick Stein. I'm the president and CEO of Arts Orange County. We're the countywide nonprofit arts council. We're designated by the County Board of Supervisors as their official local arts agency, and we provide a wide range of programs and services that are typical of a community arts council. But we also serve a lot of our local government entities through consulting services, including quite a bit in the range of public art. And we have the privilege of working with the City of Newport Beach a number of years ago on a master arts plan, and we have been able, we've had the privilege of working with you since the inception of the sculpture exhibition in Civic Center Park. So it's wonderful working with you and your staff, and we'll go right into the presentation. So what I'm presenting to you tonight are selections and alternates that were, are being recommended to you by your City Arts Commission, who met together with a couple of museum leaders, who each year we bring in a couple of museum leaders or curators to participate in the judging process. And as you can see here from the map, we have the current Phase Five exhibitions in red, which were installed last June, and they will be joined by the additional 10 sculptures that we're recommending on sites that will be vacated by the Phase Four sculptures. They'll be removed immediately prior. And they, those Phase Four sculptures have been in place, will have been in place for two years at that point. And just to remind you, it is a two-year loan, two-year exhibition of these works. The selection criteria, and I won't read every line for you, but artistic merit is of high importance. The durability, obviously, being outdoors and in the seacoast climate, the practicality and suitability for all ages and viewers, and the site appropriateness. Will it, will it fit appropriately on the designated sites that we have to exhibit the work here? We collected input from the public, as we've done for a number of years now, through an online public poll, and had 453 voters with more than 1,000 votes. Each could vote up to, for up to three of their favorites. And the poll was open for a month. It was described to everybody as non-binding and advisory in nature. And we had submissions of artworks totaling 59. So the first of the recommended artworks is Talking Heads by Oleg Lobekin, who previously had a work in, on display here, No Swimming, the giant shark fin, some of you may recall. He's a noted artist up in the Bay Area and has exhibited at Stanford University, as well as the Cathedral of St. John the Divine in New York City. He had a jury ranking of number one and a poll, a public poll ranking of number eight. And you can see a couple of other views of it as well, as we've simulated its placement within the park at a site that has been recommended by the commission as well. Migration of My Dreams is very colorful work of butterflies. There's five butterfly sculptures in the arrangement, and they can be arranged in a variety of ways. And this is by Southern California artist, and her butterflies are all around the world, including the United Nations, UNAD's campaign in Geneva. It's been displayed on a bill on the electronic signboard in Times Square in New York as well. And again, this was ranked by the public as number one and by the jury as number two. And our suggested placement by the Arts Commission is on the slope, where they'll be seen as you drive into the Civic Center as well as as you leave. Windows by Chris O'Rourke is an abstract work, stainless steel. It ranked second with the jury, 14th with the public poll. He has exhibited primarily in Nevada and in Michigan. And we've identified this as our recommended site for this particular work. Scorpion by Colin Selig, Walnut Creek artist. He repurposes steel propane tanks for much of his work, and this was ranked very highly by the jury, tied for second, and the public poll showed it at 29. We think it will be a whimsical and fun work for kids in particular, so, and the idea is to put it up near the, I'm not sure what we describe that winding table as, just up above. It's a lovely viewpoint of the whole park from there. New York artist Roberto Vasani has created something called X of Many Children, and this has been exhibited in New York City as well as elsewhere, and this is a second, tied for second with the jury and public poll, 42nd. It's a very different kind of work than we've seen in the park before, and I think that that was quite a bit what attracted the commissioners to recommend it. And it will replace the three shiny angels that we have up there that are leaving us after two years now, a very popular work. Stephen Rehman is an artist whose work, Chairman of the Board, you've seen for two years. That work is leaving, but he submitted another work that captivated the jury and ranked well in the public poll as well. And it's also a kinetic work. It's called Birdman, and the plan is to cite it on the same location as his Chairman of the Board was located. Finish Line by Ron Whitaker. This ranked very highly in the public poll as well as with the jury, and it's, it's just, you know, a wonderful work depicting the winner in motion, breaking through the finish line. And Ron's got a work in, in the exhibit now, and that's The Marble Shooter. That's the one that's fairly low to the ground with the marble in it. And it's very unusual that the commission selects an artist to be, have two works on exhibit at the same time. So they were really fascinated by this work. And this will replace the tot. Some of you are familiar with the little steel tot just across the bridge, and I think it's a great location for it. Here we have a realistic and delightful work called Woodpeckers by Connecticut artist Michael McLaughlin. This ranked very high in the public poll as well as with the jury, and it's, it's just, you know, a wonderful work depicting the winner in motion, breaking through the finish line. And Ron's got a work in, in the exhibit now, and that's The Marble Shooter. That's the one that's fairly low to the ground with the marble in it. And it's very unusual that the commission selects an artist to be, have two works on exhibit at the same time. So they were really fascinated by this work. And this will replace the tot. Some of you are familiar with the little steel tot just across the bridge, and I think it's a great location for it. Here we have a realistic and delightful work called Woodpeckers by Connecticut artist Michael McLaughlin. This ranked very high in the public poll as well as with the jury, and it shows a woodpecker with its young, and a lot of detail to the work, and we wanted to make sure that this one is very close to the walkway so that people can enjoy, enjoy it up close and personal. This work is by a renowned international artist who died a couple of years ago, Eno Ramponen, and his estate continues to manage the works that he has left, and this one has been exhibited around in different locations as well. It would be the first work we've ever exhibited in Carrara marble, which is a lovely medium, and it's called Suncrest. And as you can see in that image, oops, as you can see in the image, the light just shines right through the slats. And this will replace the Ray Katz Tinker Toy that is right in front of City Hall here. Ray, Ray, actually, that was his second work with us. He was very popular, and he had another work submitted this year that didn't quite make the cut, but, but the commission likes his work as well. But this is a very beautiful piece, and again, it'll be fairly up close to be able to view it. Again, the great popularity of having kinetic works was something that the jury and the public reflected in their voting. The Celestial Carousel is one of those, from Santa Rosa, and I don't know if any of you have ever been up there, but they have a very popular steampunk festival, and this sort of evokes a little bit of that in its style, the use of the metal. And we are recommending that it be placed where the Feathers in the Wind is currently sited, which is close to the Circle of Bunnies, where a lot of the kids congregate, and it's the kind of work that I think will be especially appreciated by the youngsters. We always like to have some alternates, just in case there's an issue with any of the works being available. We, we check throughout the process to make certain they're available and that they've read the contract and that they're willing to move forward with it. But things do happen, and so we have The Leaf Spiral by Ken McCall in Boise, Idaho. This was popular with the public and with the jury. And we had CJ Wrench's Tranquil Lounger, which is a very interesting work in that it's solar-powered, and so it has lighting at night, but it also has the ability to plug in and charge your smartphone. And then, speaking of steampunk, this is Anna by Ilya Idelchik in San Diego. And this, you know, I think was not as well-liked in the early voting, but during the commission meeting, the commissioners all began to talk about it a lot and how unusual it was. And it's certainly sort of pop culture art, and seemed like it was something that, you know, teens and millennials might especially enjoy. So those are the recommendations, and very much, again, appreciate the opportunity to present them this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stein, for taking the time to come down, and thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
And public art is, I think, is, is an important part of, of life, if you will, and especially, you know, given the difficult year we've had, it's, it, you know, it really lifts people, I believe, when they, when they visit places with public art in them. And, and these are very compelling choices. And I'll say that we had a planning meeting here a few weeks ago on a Saturday, started at nine, it was over at noon, and we came out at noon, and it was a bright, beautiful noon time, and there were all sorts of people up here wandering through, walking along the walkways through the public art, enjoying it. And it kind of struck me, you know, just the, the art and everyone enjoying it, a beautiful day, and it was really achieving its mission. So thank you very much for your continued, you know, support and help with this project that's working out, I think, very well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have any council member comments? Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Stein. And I think this is your sixth year? Is it the sixth?
Sixth phase, and actually, I think, seventh year.
Seventh year. So we've been doing this every year, and every year it gets better and better. I, so I commend you and our Arts Commission and the public for their participation, and I may anticipate I'm going to steal some thunder from, before she was a councilwoman, Ms. Brenner stood right out here and talked about how important art was, but the voice of the public. And I want, maybe after sitting through these recommendations and enjoying them and certainly feeling positive about them, I'm curious about the process and how, how do we weight the vote of the public? So I see in a number of the results that the public vote was very high, and then that it wasn't selected, and, and what was selected maybe by the commission had a very low-ranking vote by the public. So I'm just throwing this out that I, maybe I'll bring this forward during the year for consideration by, by my colleagues, to consider a waiting process, that we wait the count, the public vote, maybe give it a one, one and a half points versus the commission. I just, this is a public, just as the mayor said, this is a public garden of sculpture, and we want our community to have a voice, and 400 and some people voted 1,091 votes. I want the, I want the community to embrace that they actually selected, and I would suggest, and I will propose this in a, in a future meeting, that the commission come up with a, consider a different voting or judging selection process. I respect the commission members having insight into this. They have a vision, they know what they want, and I respect that and want to protect and preserve that. But I also think the public could have a larger say instead of being outvoted and outranked by the commission. So I would like that to be considered. Mr. Hetherington, you might think about that, because it's such a fabulous public garden out, sculpture garden, and I want to see a little bit more of the public's point of view. And also, I think, Ms. Brenner, you talked about having local artists more represented. So I know you're still striving, and you probably get the submissions you get, and they're from everywhere, but that's good, too. But I'd like to see a little bit more Southern California, or California, as well as Southern California. But good job, and, and thank you for your hard work on this, and we appreciate it. And this program clearly is institutionalized now, and that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Dixon.
Ms. Brenner.
Diane, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, this has been sort of a passion of mine for a long time, and I think we're growing. Didn't, we started out, the first year that we had public input, they got to vote on
Yes, this has been sort of a passion of mine for a long time. And I think we're growing. Didn't, we started out, the first year that we had public input, they got to vote and one of them was selected. And so how many, how many did we, how did we weigh the process this year?
Well, we tally up all the votes, we share that with the Commissioners in advance. Their voting process is separate. We tally those up and share those with them in advance. And when we conduct the meeting of the Commissioners and the two outside curatorial experts, we have an open discussion. We go through all the works, we present all of the works. And then we go through basically a process of elimination of beginning with the public's top choices alongside the jury's top choices. And quite often, the conversation is about what offers balance to, you know, from one work to another, also looking at the 10 sculptures that are remaining. Do we want something that's very much alike to something that's already here? Or do we want something different? Do we want color? Because as you see, not, there isn't always a lot of color in the sculptures. And do we want something that's more kid-friendly? Do we want something that pushes people's understanding and appreciation of art a little bit, maybe raises some questions about it? And so it's really a robust conversation. It's very respectful. I was telling Mr. Heatherington before the meeting that, you know, we do have these outside experts who come in as well and participate in it. But we've never had them come in with any, you know, snobbish attitudes. They've all been totally understanding of what the real role of public art is, is both to be very, to, you know, respond to the popular taste as well as to lead people to understand and learn about the other kinds of art that exist. And so it's been a wonderful process. And I don't think that there's been any issues. And yes, there is a conversation about, well, the public liked that better than we did or we liked that less than the public did. But surprisingly, with the, ever since we started the polling, there's been a high degree of agreement between the public and the jurors in terms of the final selections.
Thank you. As I remember what I said, I'm trying to remember what I said when I was standing out there talking to the Council years ago about this. And I believe what I said at the time was that I felt like the Council should give more direction to the Arts Commission because we're the ones that actually are accountable to the public. And I remember asking whether we, whether you at the time and we now gave the Arts Commission any direction as far as saying we really like local artists, we like local subject matter, we like, you know, I just felt like it should come from the Council passed down to the Arts Commission because we are the ones that hear from the public all the time about what they like and what they don't like. So perhaps that could be on a future agenda that we could have perhaps a study session about it where we talk about the kinds of art that we're hearing from our constituents could be included. So that perhaps in the future is something that we could talk about a little bit more. But I also wanted to say that Commissioner Arlene Greer is not here this evening as she would normally be and that her mother just passed away about a week ago. I believe she was 94, is that right, Tim? And it's, you know, it's always hard to lose your mom. And Arlene would be here if it were at all possible. So I know I expressed for the entire Council our condolences to Arlene because this is such an important baby of hers. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any? Seeing no further comment from Council, any public comment from the community room? Seeing none, do we have any calls? Okay. So do we have a motion in a second regarding the recommended sculptures?
I'll make a motion to support the presentation of, or the acceptance of Phase Six recommendations for the sculpture exhibit.
I'll second that.
All right. Please vote.
With Mayor Protem Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Right. And now we have the coronavirus update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna go over just very quickly some of the latest statistics, which are very, very good right now. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Boils to talk a little bit further about our vaccination efforts. So if you can forward the slide. So really good trend line going on right now. You can see the latest numbers that were pulled down today, particularly with that positivity rate now going under two digits to a single digit. And if you recall, to move from the purple tier to the red tier, that number needs to be 8% or below there. So we're really approaching that, which is terrific. The cases per 100,000, that top number, while a very good decline seen there, that number also has to be below eight to get into that red tier. So a little more to go there, but still really strong trend lines right now with the dropping case rates. And I think we're seeing that generally. And we're also seeing that within our organization, too, the positive numbers going on there. And again, just what I just went to in terms of what we're trying to hit and really trying to move into that, to that next tier here, that we're really hoping the county over the next few weeks here, if they continue on track, will be able to move into that next red tier. With the improving numbers, we have reopened here in City Hall for our permit center and our cashiers. So I know that was really greatly appreciated by the public and we're certainly happy to be able to provide that service in that in-person way. So that started yesterday and we're, will continue that. And as well as our recreation side, too, we have our camps beginning next week and all outdoor recreation classes for this next session, all geared up to start on that. So those are very positive, too, as we continue to move forward. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Boils here to move on vaccines.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Jeff Boils, your Fire Chief. I'm gonna start with some quick vaccination distribution statistics here. We've been reading in the news lately that it's been a slow rollout here in California, but we're starting to gain some great momentum. As you can see, there are 408,645 doses have been delivered here in Orange County to residents as of February 8th. Those are the latest statistics from the state. Our Phase 1A continues with healthcare workers, public safety officials, and members of the public age 65 and older. The county is still operating out of the two super pods right now, Disneyland, Socha University specifically. And last Saturday and Sunday over Super Bowl weekend, they distributed 15,538 doses out of those two sites on Saturday and Sunday combined. They also had one mobile pod that was stood up on Sunday as well. I believe that one was down in Laguna Niguel. And the mobile pods will continue to work their way around the county as well. The, in fact, I should back up a second. They'll have one running on Friday, one on Saturday, and one on Sunday of this week. And those should be in the cities of Santa Ana, Anaheim, and Fountain Valley from the last information that I received earlier this morning. As you know, I've been reporting for the last couple of sessions now that Newport Beach has trained up several of our EMTs, let alone our paramedics, including our lifeguards, many of our lifeguards. So they're able to actually distribute the vaccines as well. They've been doing that over at the Central Net facility in Huntington Beach. So we keep asking and we keep, well, I'll just say we keep asking the county for vaccinations and the ability to stand up a site here in Newport Beach. But right now, it's really just a vaccination issue. When they've assured us that when they get a larger supply of doses, they'll consider us. Hoag Hospital, I spoke with Robert Braithwaite the other day, the President and CEO of Hoag. And he told me that they've administered over 15,000 of their Pfizer doses, mostly to their, members of their hospital. But they are also operating two little sites on their campus, one down in the lower campus by the childcare center and one in the upper campus up by the foundation center. And they're doing between 150 and 300 vaccinations at each site. So somewhere in the neighborhood of three to five to 600 a day on spotted days. It's not five days a week, it's when they have the doses available. And then they, he assured me that they open up for appointments and within three to four minutes, those appointments are filled. So it goes fast, there's still heavy demand for it. That's still where we sit as a society and a city, a county, and the state right now. The skilled nursing facilities and care facilities here in Newport Beach, nine of them, we've identified as our target ones that have the most residents. They're the ones that experienced many of the outbreaks earlier in the COVID outbreak. Our EMS division reached out to them individually and all nine have assured that their residents and their staff have been vaccinated from the CVS and the Walgreens. And that was a federally-run program where the Fed sent the doses straight to those pharmacies and those pharmacies did go to the skilled nursing facilities and care facilities. And we wanted to make sure that that was happening and according to them, it has. Some quick stats on our Newport Beach public safety cases currently, we're, knock on wood, still at zero with our police officers and our firefighters right now. I just confirmed with Human Resources before I came down here. We haven't had any on either side of public safety for the better part of a couple of weeks now. So we were part of that surge in December and January where Chief John Lewis's folks had a couple of positive cases and so did I. And we seem to have them quarantined and contained and back on the job. So that is good news. Our ICU rates, our ICUs and our hospitalizations, as you know, we were in the tier, we were ready to drop into the orange tier in November. We're on the cusp and we shot up in December, which spiked quite a bit in January. And now you'll see those graphs drop off significantly to where we are today. As of February 7th, we have transported a total of 212 positive COVID patients, COVID positive patients in our ambulances to the hospital since this began. In February of this year so far, we've had five total positive transports. So we're on track to see about 15 to 20 in the month of February, the way we're trending right now. But in January, we had 61 and in December, we had 72. So you could see where it shot up and it's coming back down. And anecdotally, you can attribute that to the fact that 16% of the population, generally elderly, 65 and older, attribute to 80% of the hospitalizations and the ICUs. So as soon as we started getting those vaccinations to that population and really focused on them, we can see the drop-off. And on that note, I have some good news. Whether this is statistically good news or just psychologically good news, as of February 1st, there are more vaccinated Americans than confirmed cases. So from here going forward, we'll continue to see the cases drop down and the vaccinations go up. So I believe that really to be an important psychological milestone for us to know that we're turning the corner. But statistically, it should help us out as well. So I thought that, throw that in there. That was texted to me last week and it got my attention. So hopefully helps you feel a little bit better, too, and helps all of us feel like we're turning the corner a little more. And that is the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? All right. Next on the agenda, motions for consideration. Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider.
A public comment on the last item?
Oh, sorry. Any public comment on the report by the City Manager, the Chief, on the coronavirus? Nothing with the community room? Nothing on the phones? Okay.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the Council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do we have any motions? Seeing none? All right. We're going to adjourn tonight in memory of two exceptional Newport Beach citizens, Eleanor Fraser and John Cruz. And Ms. Dixon is going to tell us about Eleanor Fraser. And Mr. O'Neal will tell us about John Cruz. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Eleanor, or Ellie, as she was known widely in the community, Eleanor Arnold Fraser, resident of Newport Beach since 1949, passed away with her daughters by her side on January 24th, just last week. Born in 1926 and raised in Brookline, Massachusetts, she is remembered for her grace, radiance, and hospitable, loving manner. Ellie was proud of her New England heritage dating back to the 1700s. Her father, Norman Augustus Arnold, was an opera singer in Boston, and he encouraged Ellie's love of music from a young age. Upon graduating from Brookline High School and during the early years of World War II, Ellie began a career in customer service at Sears Roebuck in Boston. The year 1946 would change the direction of Ellie's life. She met a handsome naval officer, David Ladsen Fraser, from Spartanburg, South Carolina during a dance at the Officers Club on the Boston Common. They were married in Boston on August 6, 1949. Leaving aspirations of a singing career behind, Ellie and David honeymooned on a cross-country trip to California where David had begun his career in yacht brokerage. Ellie's Bostonian habit of wearing her hat and gloves along the streets of Corona del Mar caused quite a stir in the quiet beach community in those early years. Ellie and David settled in the Cliff Haven community in 1951 and would remain in their home for 70 years. While David built his business, Fraser Yachts, Ellie raised three daughters and became active in the growing community of Newport Beach. She was an early member of St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, where she inspired many through the choir with her beautiful soprano voice. She was also a member of the Newport Harbor Service League, which sponsored community programs through volunteer efforts at Sherman Gardens. These women were instrumental in the transformation of the Service League into the Junior League of Orange County. Her Service League friendships remained strong well into Ellie's 90s, with the women forming a garden club and an investment club in which Ellie remained active. Many girls in the Newport Heights community were lucky enough to have Ellie as their Brownie and Girl Scout leader for Troops 23, 28, and 48. She was an adored, an adored, favorite mother to many children, many girls, who were fortunate to grow up in Newport Beach from the mid-1950s through the 1970s. After raising her family, Ellie returned to retail life, enjoying many years in the Personnel and Human Resources Department at Robinson's, formerly over in Fashion Island. She also pursued her New England heritage and became an active member of the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution. She enjoyed many years traveling overseas with David for his business and yachting endeavors, which included many cruising opportunities around the world. She also treasured 65 years of friendships made at the Newport Harbor Yacht Club. Her favorite pastime, however, was simply being together with her family at home. Ellie was predeceased by her husband, David Fraser, who passed away on January 6, 2021. And the mayor thoughtfully and meaningfully gave his adjournment, that we adjourned the meeting of the Council on January 26th. So David and Ellie are together. She is survived by her three daughters and their families, Lori Booth of Newport Beach, Diane Strollo of Orcas Island, Washington, and Jenny Henke of Newport Beach, four grandchildren, Jeanette Palisol of Costa Mesa, Diane Booth of Las Vegas, Hillary Elliott of Dallas, Emily Henke of Seattle, and two great-grandchildren. Ellie was the finest example of a loving, caring mother, teaching the importance of family unity. She is greatly missed and her passing has left a huge void in the hearts of her family. And a small family memorial is planned at a later date.
John was born March 4, 1929 in Pasadena, California. He attended UCLA, graduated in 1951 with a degree in engineering. He was a member of Alpha Sigma Phi fraternity in the Naval ROTC. He served in the U.S. Navy during the Korean War for three years, then attended USC where he received his MBA. He worked as a civil structural engineer where a notable project was working as a project manager on the Saturn missile test stand in Huntsville, Alabama in the 1960s. While in the Navy, he met Paula Bush on Balboa Island in 1952 and they married in 1956. They lived a life of travel, visiting all the continents and over 100 countries. In 1975, they moved to Newport Beach where they lived ever since. John became a member of the Newport Harbor Exchange Club, where he was president from 2002 to 2003. He passed away peacefully in his home at the age of 91, surrounded by his loving family. John is survived by Paula and their children, Dana, Lauren, and David.
We stand adjourned.